It is 5:30. Good evening and welcome to the Standing Fall Town Meeting convened pursuant to Rockport's Code of Bylaws, Chapter 2, Section 3. I note for the record, a quorum being present, the meeting is called to order. On the dais to my right are Town Clerk Melanie Waddell and Assistant Town Clerk Courtney Buchanan; to my left, Town Council Darren Klein and Town Administrator Mitch Viera. Sitting in convened session tonight are the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the Department of Public Works Commissioners, and the Community Preservation Committee. If there are any other committees in session, I'm sorry, I missed you. Please stand, attend the nation's flag, and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you can be seated. The first order of business is the reading of the warrant. The Chair will entertain a motion to omit reading the warrant articles verbatim. Moved and seconded, the question is whether to omit a verbatim reading of the warrant. This requires a majority vote to pass. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries. The second order of business is reading the return of service on the warrant. I'll ask the Town Clerk to read the return of service.
I, Daniel K. Buckley, Constable for the town of Rockport, have on this date, August 22nd, 2024, posted the Fall Town Meeting warrant for the Fall Town Meeting to be held Monday, September 9th, 2024 at 5:30 PM at the Rockport High School, in the two post offices, the Town Bulletin Board, and seventeen other public places throughout the town, including three in Precinct 1, three in Precinct 2, and three in Precinct 3. Signed, Daniel K. Buckley, Constable of the town of Rockport. This was received August 23rd, 2024 at 8:06 AM. Signed, Assistant Town Clerk Courtney Abraham Buchanan.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Just some general announcements, as I believe everybody saw, there are some refreshments in the lobby. Restrooms are out in the lobby, to my right, the men's room, to my left, the ladies' room. There's no smoking on school property. Please remember, we're guests of the school department, and so let's keep the hall neat as we leave. And finally, please silence any cell phones, pagers, or any other Apple Watches, other things that may interrupt the meeting. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, as adapted to town meeting by the laws of the Commonwealth, Rockport's bylaws, and custom and practice. As a first principle, let's be civil to one another, let's listen to one another carefully and consider carefully the decisions that we're making. I'll briefly summarize our expected procedure and refer you to the guide for voters participating in town meeting, which is contained in the Voters Booklet. I have a long form and a short form that I've developed. Everyone here looks like the usual suspects, so absent objection, I'm going to use a short form to review our expected procedure. If anybody wants me to clarify anything, please don't be shy about asking me to do that. All comments and remarks are addressed to the Chair and should relate to the immediate question before the meeting. The sponsor bringing a motion ordinarily is afforded ten minutes for remarks, and subsequent speakers are given five. I'll warn you if you're speaking, if you're approaching your limit, so that you can make your final points. Speakers cannot start back and forth questions and conversations, however, if issues arise which call for clarification, I will certainly try to get focused, specific answers for you to avoid confusion on the issue. Speakers won't usually be recognized more than twice to address a debatable issue, and preference will be given to voters who have not yet addressed the meeting. When discussion on a debatable motion is done, we'll proceed to vote. Once we make that transition, further discussion is not in order. That happens when either the Chair senses the meeting is ready to vote, or a member with the floor moves to end debate, or moves for the previous question. Briefly, just five points to keep in mind, if that becomes necessary. First, in order to move the question or end debate, you must have the floor. Second, once properly made, it's not a debatable motion itself, we will move immediately to voting. Third, if you make this motion, please, that's all that you should say. Don't argue your view and then move the question, just stand up, state your name and address, and that you're moving the question. Fourth, such a motion requires a two-thirds vote. And fifth, and finally, with that in mind, I'd ask anyone considering moving the question to think about that prior to making the motion, to think about whether or not there have been legitimate issues raised by your friends and neighbors which have not yet been clarified. I can't and I won't stop you from bringing the motion, but I ask you to remain mindful of this before making it. We have the assistance of Lucy May Weltske tonight with the microphone, if Lucy May can identify herself. If she's here? Well, she can't identify herself if she's not here, but we can thank her when she gets here. All right. For today's meeting, I have determined that the following articles are related, so that when any one of these related articles in a group is drawn, by the Town Clerk will take up that group in the order stated. This is on page three of your Voters Booklet, and those are Articles A and B, second group, C, D, and E, and third group, I and J. We will now turn to draw the first article. The Town Clerk, under our bylaws, has the responsibility to draw the articles to help us put them in order for the meeting, so I'm going to turn to Ms. Waddell now.
There had been some questions as to how we chose the articles in previous town meetings. It's always been the same way. I have varying degrees of different Crown Royal bags that I found in my desk when I was elected, and they've always been used with Scrabble letters. I have A through K here, so I'm just going to put all the Scrabble letters in the bag. And then I will pick the first one, this is how it's always been done. I just wanted to make sure there was transparency in how we're doing it.
I feel like Pat Sajak. Article E. Article E is the first article drawn, which means we will take up first C, D, and then E, that first grouping.
So C, D, and E. And I'll put them all back in, and we'll pick one more, just so we know what the next grouping is.
Okay, sure.
Okay. This is... So if you've seen me previously shaking the bag, that's...
And that is K, which doesn't have a related article. So C, D, and E to be followed by K, and we'll be back to you with more drawings. Mr. Viera?
Article C. Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves the town here and receives the report of the Community Preservation Committee. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth George, and I'm the chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm presenting tonight in accordance with the town of Rockport bylaw, Chapter 2, Section 6D. This calls for recommendations to be made from the committee at town meeting. You will hear later about the specific applications that we are presenting to you, the voters, for approval in spending your CPC funds. First, I would like to do a quick recap of CPC and the town of Rockport. You, the voters, voted in CPC in our town 21 years ago. The first town meeting we brought project forward was spring of 2003. That was for $101,477.58 for the row parcel of watershed up behind the school and golf course over here. That was the beginning of a long CPC road. CPC is overseen by the Department of Revenue, and it's made up of mandatory town board members, and we have four moderator-appointed members as well. We have a nine-member board, and I'll just name who's on the board and what committees. So currently, we have Housing Authority Bethany Brosnan, Conservation Commission Dawn Epstein. We just newly appointed her to replace Ashley Shed. DPW is Erin Battistelli, she's our vice chair. Planning Board Peter Cutner, Historic Commission Ken Kaiser. And moderator and then moderator-appointed members are Mel Michaels, the treasurer, Larry Neal, Jim Ugon, and myself, Ruth George. We also assigned a Select Board member, a liaison, and that currently is Denise Donnelly. And we also have a Finance Committee liaison, and I believe that is currently Tom Barrett. As you can see, we have a very diverse group of representation of multiple town committees and interests on our committee. We currently meet monthly via Zoom. We just had another meeting, and we're going to do it for the next three months also on Zoom, and then we'll look at meeting in person. CPC funds can only be spent if the application falls into three or four approved state categories. Those are affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. Cities and towns could decide when they signed up if they wanted to vote it in for a 1%, 2%, or a 3% match. Rockport voters were very wise in 2002 to vote it in as a 3% match. This makes us entitled to get more money in the second and third rounds each year. So far, Rockport has realized over $15 million to date. That is annual revenues and matching funds from the state. Next, I want to review what we have been doing this current year. In the fall, we held a posted CPC workshop to review the application process and discuss with any groups or citizens that had ideas for potential application topics, and review the application that was specific to their area. We'll be doing this again in November. We'll have it in the paper and remind people to come. Anything you can think of that would be a good CPC application in one of those four areas, we'd love to have you come and talk to us, and we'll explain if it would fit within the guidelines. Our application deadline is always the same. It's the first Monday in February. That needs to be stamped in at Town Hall by that date, by the close of Business Day. That is when the work really begins for the committee, reviewing applications and working with each group to see that their application meets the standard under which their specific category. This year, we had a record thirteen applications. This year, we also added an additional note on our application. We've been having a little problem with a lot of applications needing DPW support after they got done, or while they were being done after they got voted on, and sometimes the DPW wasn't aware of that. So in our newest application, we did add an area that said, if the project involved town-owned land, the applicant must present their application to the DPW Board of Commissioners to be signed off on. And it's kind of ironic that I think all seven of the ones that came to us in the end all needed to go to DPW because they're all pretty much town-owned land. Our annual ask this year was a total of those thirteen, $2,406,800. Through the process, six applications were withdrawn by the applicants for different reasons, and I'll just quickly go through those. They were an ADA-approved ramp for Spiron Hall for $21,000. They had started working on that, but then when they came to doing the design, they realized that the slant of it had to be longer, so it couldn't go where they wanted to. So they have to do more work on that, so they withdrew it. HVAC and patio creation for the Rockport Art Association for $115,000. They had a change in leadership there, so they withdrew it because they had so many other things on their plate. The Community Land Trust Affordable Housing had an application for $350,000, and they were trying to find a piece of property. They are different than the municipal trust in that when their application, when they're working on it, when they come to present it to us, they have to have a specific piece of property in mind, and they didn't have one, so they withdrew it. Fireman's Trust Park for $300,000. I encouraged the town to put an application in for this in case at the last spring town meeting, it was voted that they were going to tear down the Fireman's Trust building. That way, we would have money in the pipeline or an application in at the appropriate time, but that didn't happen at town meeting, and we're keeping the building, so we didn't need that application. Sewell Scripture Museum for $70,000. That was hard. They had... They wanted us to help them build an addition to the building, but it was under historic, and we can't build something new historic, so that had to come out. It's not in open space, it's not in recreation, and it's not in affordable, so we had to pull that one. It was very sad to do that. And the Baptist Church, they wanted to add a lightning rod to the steeple, and they withdrew that. We found that we were having a lot of applications and didn't have really all that money, and so I think they got that, they were $8,140. We gave them money last year for a steeple, which they pretty much done, and I think they were getting that from the Pershners. This reduced the ask down to approximately $1,452. February through June, we are meeting with different applicants and discussing their projects, guiding them along, looking for bids, talking to them about their project and how it will work and fit with CPC. July 16th, we held a posted public hearing to have the final seven applicants review their projects to the public for questions and answers, and also a final time for the committee to ask them questions. At the close of the public hearing, we, the committee, discussed the projects, discussed our budget availability, and voted which applications to move forward for you tonight and for what amounts. Our available funds were, at that time, $1,825. We like to keep approximately $400,000 to $500,000 reserve for the next year's cycle, and I'll explain why. We have gone down in amounts awarded by the state. From the first year, we were one of very few communities who started in CPC, and especially at 3%. So our first match from the state was 101%. And that was... Then our actual match for 2023 was 30.81%, and our estimated for 2025, it looks like it might be down to 17% match. So we always like to keep money on hand, so we can match it with the new money, so that we have a big enough pot for a good amount of projects. We on the committee are stewards for your monies. Tonight, we have seven great applications to present to you for your consideration and vote. We have some in each of the approved categories. When thinking about this year's applications, they really embody preserving the community and are very volunteer-driven, and they are Thatcher's Island, South Tower, Rockport Trails and Mapping Group, the South End Association, Sandpiper Park, Bradley Wharf Rehabilitation, the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust, Granite Pier Boat Ramp and Pier Side, and the Rockport Softball Field Renovations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? All right. The question is on whether to receive the annual report of the Community Preservation Committee, which we just heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries. Before we go to a motion on Article D, to my right in the upper quarter of the room, that is the visitor section. I know there are a number of voters up there in the visitor section. I can see you, and I can see the lanyards. So on electronic voting, it's not going to matter, but if we do a hand vote, it's going to give me a migraine if I'm trying to figure out who's who. So I give that to you to do what you want with it. For any visitors, however, you must remain in the visitor section. And then finally, I skip past taking a quick QA check on the clickers, so we're going to do that now, and then we'll go to Article D after that. So just to make sure they're working, when you select your yes or no vote, which I'll explain in a minute, you ought to see a green light on the clicker. That will help us do a QA check. And so... So I'm going to state, I tried to do one at the last town meeting, it didn't go over very funny, but I thought it was pretty funny. So I'll try this one. We've just debated heavily a motion to raise and appropriate $20 million in tax revenue to restore the Outer Harbor Breakwater to the original design envisioned by the Navy, and to fund that through a Prop 2.5 override. So we will vote by electronic means. You will have 12 seconds from when I say the words, quote, "Vote Now," close quote. You will press 1 or A for aye, if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for no, if you oppose the motion. Again, the question is on whether to raise money through a Prop 2.5 override to restore the breakwater. This requires a two-thirds vote. It's completely fake and non-binding. Is there any confusion on the question? All right. All those in favor, press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed, press 2 or B for no. Ready? You should see a green light. When you press the button. Well, we got plenty of numbers. Yeah, I see what you mean. 92 to 73.
That sounds just about how many people are here.
Yep. All right. So is there a motion on Article D?
Mr. Moderator, first motion for Article D. CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $76,100 be transferred from FY25 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Reserve Account. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to transfer $76,100 from CPC estimated annual revenues to the Community Housing Reserve Account as set forth on page 21 of the Voters Booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $76,100 be transferred from FY25 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Recreation Reserve Account. Select Board and Community Preservation support this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Let me just do a quick explanation. So in each of these accounts, we are, at the beginning, we need to put 10% in each of the accounts, housing, the three different ones, so that's why the $76,100. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to transfer $76,100 from CPC estimated annual revenues to the CPC Open Space Recreation Reserve Account. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries. Third motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $76,100 be transferred from FY25 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve Account. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to transfer $76,100 to the CPC Historic Preservation Reserve Account. All those... It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries. On to Article E. First motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $100,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Account, and $100,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund to be expended under the direction of the Thatcher and Straitsmith Islands Town Committee, working with the CPC for the restoration, rehabilitation, and preservation of the South Tower on Thatcher Island, and to enhance the safety, historic integrity, and appearance of the tower. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
Thank you. This project is to restore and preserve the top portion of the South Tower. The Twin Towers were built in 1861. Thatcher's was deeded to the town in 2001. Thatcher's is maintained by the town and a multitude of dedicated volunteers. This project involves the need for repair from rust jacking, a process in which the rusting iron expands and cracks the granite blocks into which each stanchion anchor is inserted. This has weakened the outside parapet walkways on both decks. Because the parapets support the upper portion of the tower, their continued disintegration could result in a catastrophic loss of the light, the lantern room, and the galley deck. This repair will probably require the removal of the entire lantern room by helicopter, lifted it off the whole lighthouse, and bringing it to shore to make the necessary repairs as well as the lantern deck. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service are owners of the North Tower and have committed to raising the necessary funds to repair that tower and plan for it to be done in the next few years. This is expected to be a $2 million project. The town of Situate had the same problem with their tower, and theirs was funded by CPC. We met with the applicant and discussed ways this might be funded, beginning with all from CPC, to some from fundraising, to doing a bond for the project, similar to the community house. The community house bond still has several years left to be paid off, so that really wasn't an option to be taken in the next year or so. The final request to the CPC committee was for $200,000 this year, with the anticipation of additional similar applications over the next five years. This would use CPC for one half of the money needed, and they will look for grants and fundraises for the other $1 million. CPC will hold the money in our account until drawn upon. That being, that being, would forego the need for paying interest on a bond for the town, which would be very expensive. This is a project that needs to be done, but the ICC Commonwealth, our lighthouse contractor, said it wasn't needed emergently. If the tower is not repaired, it could lead to closing the tower permanently and could lose, we could lose the National Historic Landmark designation by the National Park Service, and its ownership could revert back to the federal government. Since 1998, Thatcher Island Town Committee and Thatcher Island Association have raised over $3.6 million. They have over 100,000 volunteer hours out there, and they have over 115 volunteers. The Twin Lights and Thatcher's are featured on our town seal because of historic significance. This beautiful area is open to all via boat trips weekly in the summer months. You don't have to have a boat to be out there. You can go out on that boat, and it is spectacular when you go out there and look back at the town and think, this is mine. This is our first project tonight that is truly about preserving our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom.
Lucy?
Hold on, I'm sorry. We now, yeah, Lucy May Weltske's got a mic, sir, she'll bring it right down to you.
My name is Tom Delaney. I live at 70 Eden Road. I remember the time when the land was transferred from the federal government to the town, took an act to Congress. Every once in a while, I live just across the street, and every once in a while, I'll see a helicopter come in and land, somebody get out, he'll be gone for an hour maybe, and then they'll come back and pick him up. I assume he's doing something with the light up there. So my question is, does the Coast Guard contribute anything still to the maintenance of that light, and have they been asked?
Thank you, sir, and we'll see if we can get an answer on that, but before I do that, any further discussion? Any other discussion in addition to that? Ms. George?
No, maybe.
Oh, yes, sir. If you've got some light to shed, please do so.
Yep.
That was actually not intentional either. It really wasn't.
Yes, William Whiting, President of the Thatcher and Straitsmith Island Association. The Coast Guard has responsibility to maintain the light, and only the light. Responsibility for maintaining the tower, all the tower, all the buildings around it, property of Rockport, and it's our responsibility to maintain all that property, including the tower.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All right. I sense you are ready to vote. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $100,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve Account, and the same amount from the Undesignated Fund to be expended by the Thatcher and Straitsmith Islands Committee relating to the South Tower on Thatcher Island as outlined on page 22 of the Voters Booklet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $176,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund, and $200,000 from Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to be expended under the direction of the DPW Commissioners and Director, working with the CPC, to conduct repairs and stabilization work on Bradley Wharf for restoration, rehabilitation, and preservation purposes, and to enhance the safety and integrity of said wharf. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George?
Thank you. This project is in follow-up to last year's CPC award. This project is in follow-up to last year's CPC Award for the Option Study for Bradley Wharf for $40,000. This is, this is listed under Historic Preservation. This is being brought by the Department of Public Works. Bradley Wharf, off to the right of Bear Skin Next Main Road, is an old cobble-filled wharf composed of large granite stones and has the iconic Motive Number One at the end portion. Areas found needing repairs are chinking repairs to fill voids along the wharf faces, upper stone reconstruction, this would consist of filter fabric and fill and excavation and removal of the top one or two courses of wallstone, and existing fill, subgrade preparation, resetting wallstones with supplemental chinking stones, repointing the joints along the top side of the capstones, and backfilling landside of the wall with filter fabric placed on the backside of the wallstones. Around the motif, the top side should be finished with a concrete apron and some of the areas with compacted crushed stone fill. With these repairs completed, the wharf will immediately improve its resilience for current storm damage and have a much better base to build upon as well as look to adapt to the harbor and sea level rise. The wharf is an important parking area and integral part of the commercial fishing in Rockport. This project could be completed in a single off-season and would not have extensive impacts on the summertime use for the area and tourists. This has the support of the Harbor Masters, Conservation Commission, and the Select Board. Again, preserving an area that makes Rockport, Rockport. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? All right. I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $176,000 from the Undesignated Fund and $200,000 from the estimated, from estimated revenue to be expended by the DPW relating to Bradley Wharf as set forth on page 23 of the Voters Booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Third motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $30,700 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account to be expended under the direction of the Select Board and Rights of Way Committee, working with the CPC, for the completion of trail mapping to preserve and enhance access to open space. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
This project is listed under Open Space and Recreation. This application is from the Rockport Trails Work Group, consisting of Right of Way members, Conservation Commission, Open Space and Recreation, Essex County Green Belt, Cape Van Trail Stewards, and our local scout troops. Our Rockport Trails provide opportunities to get fresh air and exercise, enjoy the natural beauty of our woodlands and ponds, and to experience the splendor of our coastline and learn about our habitat and environment. The objective of this application is to enhance the mapping and marking of the trail systems to promote better understanding of the trail locations, routes, characteristics, and boundaries for the enjoyment and safety of all users. This project will include six-foot wooden kiosks with large trail maps at the head of a small number of trails, single four-foot trail headposts with signage and map at a number of others, and consistent trail markings on the main trails. This will be done on town-owned trail property. Rockport has over 25 miles of trails. Our woodlands have significantly changed over the years. Today, many areas that once had been open views are now grown in with tangled brush and vines. At one time, these were open fields with dirt roads, which is no longer the case. This local initiative is very timely in that Beverly and Addison Gilbert Hospital Emergency Departments and their trauma services is working on a similar initiative to make trails on Inocia more easily accessible for timely rescue of injured people. The committee has extensive, has had extensive assistance from the town's GIS Department for initial mapping. Again, this is a volunteer-driven application that is keeping with preserving our trail system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $30,700 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account to be expended by the Select Board and Rights of Way Committee relating to trail mapping and open spaces as set forth on page 23 of the Voters Booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Fourth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $140,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account to be expended under the direction of the DPW Commissioners and Director, working with the CPC, for the restoration, rehabilitation, preservation, and repair of the Granite Pier Boat Ramp, Sea Walls, and surrounding areas to enhance the safety and integrity of said areas. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
This project is listed under Recreation, but could also be included under Historic Preservation. Granite Pier is the only functional boat ramp in the town of Rockport. It's a historic wharf. Being an oceanside community, we have hundreds of commercial and recreational boats on moorings and in slips, all being launched from trailers at this point. There are also hundreds of boats on trailers that are launched from here each time they're used over the summer months. Over the past few years, the ramp has deteriorated to an alarming degree. The lowest area has developed a drop-off that makes it almost impossible to pull boats off at low tide. The surface of the ramp and the road at the top have developed potholes and soft areas that will only grow worse. There are also a troubling number of small rocky, lying, small rocks lying about the ramp that have fallen out of the wall, weakening it. This application originally requested for $230,000 and included a few more things, but in discussion with the DPW Department, like all other wharf projects, it was thought that the best initial approach was to ask for money that needed to be done now, the repair of the bottom of the ramp, rework the granite walls, and do some initial paving around the ramp, and then this request would include an engineering study for the entire wharf, and that request, so the total request was changed to $130,000. Granite Pier is a volunteer committee that has a pier manager, and this is supported by the Harbor Masters, and all of the hot top and all of that will be, anything they dig up will be taken away by the company that does the work.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Arsenian. Toby, Mr. Arsenian, there's a mic behind you. You can pick whichever one you want. It's up to you.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I'm not opposed to the project, but I would like to suggest that the Historic Commission should get busy and get all of the town's wharves, both public and private, designated as historic structures. As the water rises, there will be pressure to raise the wharves. Already such proposals are underway for the tool company property at Pigeon Cove, and when such things happen, they will probably be done in the cheapest, nastiest way possible, using cement, not granite blocks, and if they are all designated as historic structures, that could not happen. So would the Historic District Commission comment on the possibility of designating all of the town's granite wharves as historic structures?
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Yes, Ms. McCarthy.
Barb McCarthy, 105 Granite Street. Just a point of clarification. I think you said $130,000, Ruth, and this says $140,000.
I'm sorry, $140,000. I made a mistake.
$130,000?
$140,000.
$140,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Kaiser, 20 Jewett Street. I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission, and I think Mr. Arsenian's request is a very worthy one, and we will certainly look into it.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lush. Right there, Molly. Molly, right there.
Rosemary Lush, 39 School Street, Rockport, one of the Rockport Harbor Masters. We support both Mr. Arsenian and the Conservation Commission on all of the structures on the wharf. We have to get started sometime.
Thank you, Ms. Lush. Further discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. Again, the question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $140,000 from the CPC Undesignated Fund to be extended, expended by the DPW relating to Grant Pier as set forth on page 23 of the Voters Booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. Fifth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $150,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account to be expended under the direction of the DPW Commissioners and Director, working with the Community Preservation Committee for the restoration, rehabilitation, and repair of the softball fields at Pingery Park on Story Street and at the school complex on Jordan's Lane, Rockport.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
This project is listed under Recreation. This project for restoration, rehabilitation, repair of the two-town softball, the two-town softball fields, the first being the Glenn James McCoy Pingery Field, located on Story Street, Pigeon Cove, and the second is Greenfield here at the school complex on Jordan's Lane. Both of these fields are used by hundreds of softball players each year, and they are now in poor condition. Previous CPC funds restored Pingery Tennis Court and Basketball Courts, and now it's time for the softball fields to finish that area out. They are looking to, on the new softball fields, obtain new backstops behind the diamonds, new fencing and fence guards around the fields and dugouts, new sod in the infield areas. Last year CPC assisted in renovating the Evans Field Diamond and area, and that has come out beautiful. This is a volunteer-driven application and has support from the Rockport Athletic Department. Also, the application wanted to give a lot of support to Jeff Popowski, volunteer groundskeeper for Green, Evans, and McCoy Fields, again, preserving our fields for years and youth to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $150,000 from the, $1,000 from the Undesignated Fund to be expended by the DPW relating to Pingery Park and the Jordan's Lane softball fields as set forth on page 23 of the Voters Booklet. This also requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Sixth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $36,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account and be expended under the direction of the DPW Commissioners and Director, working with the CPC, for the restoration, rehabilitation, preservation, and improvement of a portion of the San Piper Park on South Street, Rockport. Select Board and CPC support this article.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
This project is also listed under Recreation, but could also be Open Space. This is an application by the South End Association with oversight by the Conservation Commission and their director, who are stewards of this parcel of property. They are looking to restore and rehab the property and do improvements of a portion of San Piper Park on South Street, which is adjacent to Cape Hedge Beach. This property was deeded to the town of Rockwood, acting through the Conservation Commission for the public use for open space, conservation, and recreation. This was given to the town through the generosity of Dorothy Wrightson in December 2013. Assessed value at that time was $900,000. She gave it to the town to have a beautiful open space area. This parcel was an early CPC application, as I remember right in this auditorium. That was passed in 2016 for $15,000, yeah, $15,000, for making the site safe for pedestrian, passive, and active recreation and fishing, as it was currently enjoyed. No structures were planned on the site except for benches. Pathways were in the original plan, as were natural plantings. This original application was by Mary Ann Lash from the Kongkong and Geraldine Falco, our commission agent at the time. Soon after improvements began in 2017, a significant storm dismantled the benches and has been, that had been used from old granite, the old granite foundation pieces from the inn, and the lot has been left in disrepair. A lot of the early plantings that were right by the water were washed away, and nothing has been done since. Since that time, in addition to the area adjacent to the lot, but still untown-owned property, is the placement of a Jiffy John down in that area. The South End Association, very much like the Old Garden Beach Association, is working as volunteers in their specific areas, trying to clean up and making our beautiful coastal area lookouts inviting for all. This group has been meeting with the Conservation Agent and previous members and working on the, looking at the old design and plantings on the earlier plan. The site has been relooked at, and all work to be done is away from the velocity and splash zone this time on the water side. It's not going to be anything on the water side of the parcel. Benches will be reset and native plantings added, and pathways will be only three feet wide, and plantings will be outside again of the velocity and splash zone. All of this has been approved by the current Conservation Commission. In addition, they're going to be working with a scout troop to hopefully make the port-a-party blend into the green background better. That has, that really isn't on this application, but it's something down there that they want to make sure looks better to people coming down there. Many people just drive down there in an early morning and have coffee, read the paper or something, and it's just pretty much of an eyesore in that whole area. Again, all the current application work will be done on the roadside and the middle, none in the splash or velocity zone. Initial money that was awarded in 2016 is in the process of being returned to CPC coffers to be used for other projects. Because the scope has somewhat changed, I thought it cleaner this way to proceed as a new project. Again, what a wonderful generous gift to the town, and now let's all get this cleaned up so it can be used for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $36,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account to be expended by the DPW relating to San Piper Park as set forth on page 23 of the Voters Booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Seventh motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $270,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account and $150,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Affordable Housing Reserve Account to be placed in the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be administered by the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees in compliance with the Code of Bylaws to be used for purposes consistent with the Community Preservation Act. The Select Board and CPC support this article.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
This is our affordable housing article for this cycle. Although the trust fund was established by the voters in 2017, trustees didn't get appointed until the spring of 2023. This group is charged with meeting the goals of 10% of Rockwood's housing stock to be affordable. Currently, with the newest addition to Granite, with Granite Street Crossing, I believe we're at 4.44%. This group is working in many different areas, all related to moving their mission forward in the right way for our town. They are looking at the recent housing production plan and are looking to hire a consultant to develop a five-year strategic plan, and also a town housing needs assessment. They have been working on developing their mission and guiding principles, researching the complicated field of affordable housing regulations, legislation, zoning, and building, creating materials and education for Rockporters on what this means locally, and liaising with other boards and committees to see what is needed in Rockport. This trust falls under the same Department of Revenue CPC guidelines as the Conservation Commission. Money can be awarded at town meeting with the intent to have this money build up as a reserve to act on as an agent of the town under the direction of the Select Board. This gives the trust and the town of Rockwood to be seen as willing partners to organizations that might want to do a small affordable project in town under our guidelines. All these negotiations will be brought by the trustees to be done by the Select Board with Town Council. There are CPC, there is a CPC Affordable Grant Agreement that we would enter into, making any project permanently affordable, adding to our 10% to get the numbers up there. The trust will use, the trust will use all the CPC and affordable housing qualifications that are in place. There are many of them. Their goal is to use the maximum allowed local preference. Applications are accept, will be accepted and chosen via a lottery system. Currently, they have received money from a couple places in their trust already. They've gotten $90,000 from APa funds and money from the Community Impact Tax. That's short-term rental funds, and they've got about $75,000 from that. Their original ask with us was $500,000 for the trust and $20,000 for the strategic plan. We voted to give them $420,000 in total for their first application process with us. We voted to give them $420,000 in total for their first application process with us, knowing they had additional money to use if needed and no projects on the horizon, but wanting them to have money to attract others to get on board with their mission. Just an FYI fact, since 2005, we have given out of our housing over $3 million in different ways. We've given it to assist Pigeon Cove ledges in their renovation. We've done the renovation at the Rockport High School Apartments. We've given it for Granite Street Crossing, Kitefield Road, Action, and rental and mortgage assistance, just to name a few. So we've done something for a lot of years in housing. But this is an exciting first step for CPC to support the Affordable Housing Trust in Rockwood. Again, what a better way to preserve our community than support affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Discussion? Yes, sir? Right behind you, Toby. You can use those too, either one.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. In the application, it says that the trust will be guided by the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. Actually, that's a false promise or a needless provocation, depending upon your point of view. When the trust succeeds in producing some housing, it will be assigned to those who qualify by means of income on the basis of a lottery. And diversity, equity, and inclusiveness, whatever those might mean, would not be any part of it. Unfortunately, it doesn't say in the application that the housing produced will be permanently affordable. Ruth George just said it. She said it at earlier meetings of the Community Protection Committee, and Diane Vella has said it at numerous public meetings as well. But what is binding when we vote on it is what is in the application. So I would ask, Ruth having said it, that Diane Vella, on behalf of the trust, and the selectmen, who will have the ultimate say on the negotiation, should also say that we're not going to part with any of the money for any housing unless it is going to be permanently affordable.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean.
So, we have, there is grant agreements, and the good thing about this, even though we got a slow start on this for Rockport, there are many grant agreements out there, and we can designate in the grant agreement that it is in perpetuity. It is going to be on these rolls forever. It will always be affordable, and it will never change. We can put that in the grant agreement. So that's what we'll have done, I'm sure. The trust wants that, and I've heard the selectmen want that, so it will be done. It will be permanently affordable.
Thank you, Ms. George. Mr. Shaw, we've got a, either one. We've got a runner coming down to you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you, Lucy.
Hi, Jason Shaw. I'm nine Athenea Way. I'm the chairman of the Rockport Planning Board, and we've been working actually quite hard the last few months on our own change to the Affordable Housing Bylaw that's in the town's bylaws, which you probably know about. We actually are having a meeting Thursday with a consultant to redo potentially a townwide bylaw which requires in any development of any size that a certain percentage, which is yet to be determined, of that housing be set aside in perpetuity for what's defined as affordable housing. So that's really, our bylaw is directed at developers or owners who are building in the town to require them to set aside the affordable housing. Maybe what you could do, Ruth, is kind of explain, because what you're talking about here is a little bit different. This sounds like it's going to be money that the Affordable Housing Trust is going to have to actually construct its own housing, is that?
Well, okay, I don't want to start to have a conversation.
No, no, I just, I asked for a clarification.
That's fine. Ask for clarification, and I'll see if there's some more, and then we'll come back to Ms. George. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any further discussion? Yes, sir? Mr. Lilia? And then Ruth, we're going to come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Lilia, 3 Pigeon Hill Street. If Ms. George could also explain whether there's going to be any type of ability for the town to protect those who were either born here, went to high school here, grew up here, to access that and not have it be open to the entire community, that we're protecting those who are Rockporters and have that connection to the community.
Thank you. Big question. I'm not sure that we're going to get a full answer on that anytime soon, but any further discussion? Ms. George?
Okay. So, first of all, this is putting money in the trust for when it is used. We don't have, they don't have anything specific. They don't have anything in the pipeline. They are working on all the guidelines for this. But to attract developers or decide that they're going to buy a piece of property or do whatever, they need some seed money in the bank to have that there. All of these things, local preference, people who work in the police department, fire department, school department, those things, the trust is working on, and I encourage anyone to go to their meetings. It's very informative, and you can express your concerns of what all people want. They're going to be doing this housing survey to get all this information to work on to develop this trust. This is a trust that will be for Rockport and our affordable housing, so it will meet the needs of Rockporters.
Any further discussion? All right. I sense you're ready to vote. Again, the question is on whether to appropriate and transfer $270,000 from the undesignated fund and $150,000 from the Affordable Housing Reserve Account to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be expended by the Affordable Housing Trust as set forth on page 23 of the Voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote to pass. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. And Ms. George, you just pitched a no-hitter.
Thank you, everyone.
And to keep things exciting, we're again going to draw two more articles from the bag for the next articles, which will follow Article K, which is up next. And those are Foxtrot, F. And Juliet, J. F and J. So next up is K. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Let me see my, right, right. So which one was first?
K.
Right, and then which was the next one?
F.
F.
And then J.
And then J.
I, J.
So it's K, F, and then I and J. So the order will be K, F, followed by I and J. Mr. Vera.
Mr. Moderator, Select Board Member Don Southerd moves that the town approve Article K as printed in the September 9, 2024 Town Meeting Warrant. The Select Board and the Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the question is on whether to authorize increasing from $15 to $25 the fee for each written demand issued by the town collector as set forth on page 26 of the Voters' booklet. This calls for a majority vote to pass. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Article F. Select Board Member Don Southerd moves that the town approve Article F as printed in the September 9, 2024 Town Meeting Warrant. The Select Board and the Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to accept the provisions of Master General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 54B, to allow trust funds to be invested under Master General Laws, Chapter 203C, the prudent investment rule. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, DPW Commissioner Chair Bruce Reed moves that the town appropriate the sum of $300,000 to pay the cost of various capital outlay items for the Water Enterprise, including but not limited to overall system improvements, design of the Great Hill Booster Station, water main replacement design work from Army and Way, water main replacement design work for Phillips Ave, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. The Select Board and the Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Arsenean. You're welcome to use either one, Mr. Arsenean. You can, down here, you can use that one, whichever you want.
Thank you. Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. I don't object to the article, but I would point out that the Code of Bylaws, Chapter 2, which deals with town meetings, Section 2B, says that we're to deal with financial articles at the spring town meeting. Now, the Board of Selectmen have never paid the slightest bit of attention to that, and this is not a reason to vote against the article, but I think that the commissioners should tell us why we're voting on it now rather than in the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Any further discussion?
I'm not going to speak to Toby's comments because I don't know the answers, but I can tell you why we're looking for the money at this point in time. This is part of a larger project that will be backed to you and all the financial committees during the current, this coming winter and into the spring town meeting. I don't think it's any surprise that we're dealing with a lot of infrastructure issues in this town, and this is a way for us to get ahead of the eight ball in some ways. So we're looking for money in these two articles to do studies. We want to be ready to proceed next spring, if the town agrees to the money that we need for these projects, to be able to get the projects out and bid early next summer so that we can take advantage of some of the building or construction season next year. And if we wait and do it all next spring, we're adding another year to the cycle, and some of these projects are, they're needed. One is, we want to put a water pump to help the pressure at the top of Gray Hill. That area used to have a water tower that was removed sometime in the 90s, and there's been water issues up on that hill ever since. And the way we can correct it is by putting in a pump system to create more pressure in the area. And if you want to know the real details, we can turn it over to the engineering folk, but I'm telling you why the commissioners did this. And we need to get the pressure up on that part of town. And the reason it hasn't been done in a long time is we've always had other projects going on in the area that affect the doing of the pumps. We're finally getting it all completed with the barn being built, the police station is built, and it's now time to fix this problem up there for the citizens of the town. So that's one area that we're looking for money for the study. Another area is, if you've heard it down, Army and Way, we all know what that road is like. And the reason it hasn't been repaired, because we have another water issue down there. We need to replace the water pipes. So, and we have the same issue on Phillips Avenue. So all of that is part of this money we're looking for, so we could get the engineering pieces done. If the town gives us the money next spring, then we will be ready to go to work and get these projects done right away. And the other article here for...
We've got to wait, we've got to take them one at a time, Mr. Reed, if we can. However, I believe you indicated studies. Is this for design or studies?
Design, study, design.
So just in case there was any confusion, we're talking about design, not studies.
I think of them as design studies.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hold your hand up nice and clear so I can see. Yes, sir?
Dan Waters, 71 18 Road. Just a quick question, really. I'm very helpful, Mr. Reed, to hear that explanation of this article. The other ones had a very eloquent explanation of all the articles by the chairman earlier, but these other articles that I guess are coming from, I don't know where, but just presented to us with no explanation doesn't seem desirable. This was helpful. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Again, we're talking about a motion made under Article I. Any further discussion on that motion, which is now before you? All right. Seeing none, I sense you are ready to vote. This requires a two-thirds vote, so we're going to vote by electronic means. Yeah, I know, I know. I figured that out. All right. So the question before you is whether to appropriate $300,000 to pay Water Enterprise capital outlay items and to authorize the treasurer to borrow that sum as set forth on page 25 of the Voters' booklet. You will have 12 seconds from when I say the words "vote now." You will press 1 or A for I, if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for no, if you oppose the motion. This requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any confusion on what we're voting on? All right. All those in favor press 1 or A for I. All those opposed press 2 or B for no. And that motion carries 92% to 8%, and the numerical 153 to 14. So we are on to the next motion.
Mr. Moderator, Article J. DPW Commission Chair Bruce Reed moves that the town appropriate the sum of $100,000 to pay costs of various capital outlay items for the Sewer Enterprise, including but not limited to overall system improvements and pump station improvements for the Sewer Enterprise, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. The Select Board and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Reed?
Okay. What we're looking for in this, for this $100,000 is, again, we have an aging infrastructure, and what we need to do is make pump station improvements. And this $100,000 will give us the ability to make some of those improvements, whether it be switching. A lot of our switching is down underground, and we need to get it up above ground. So there's a lot that needs to go on, but this $100,000 is to improve our pump stations across town. And one thing you may be amazed at, how many do we have? The town of Rockwood has 11 different pump stations, so there's a lot of work here to be done.
Any further discussion?
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. It was at the Fall Town Meeting in 2017 that we voted for a petition article brought by Eric Hutchins calling for a sewer needs assessment to be performed jointly by the DPW Commissioners, the Board of Selectmen, and the Planning Board. And here we are, seven years later, and there is no such study. The DPW has, you know, got various studies going, and periodically people attempt to move this forward. Tom Mekus made efforts, and it has not gone forward. And really, we're owed the study, and here we are, cart before the horse. I say that, but that's not a reason to vote against the appropriation. I'll be voting for it. But we are owed the study, and I think the commissioners... But we are owed the study, and I think the commissioners, the selectmen, and the Planning Board should get up and tell us when we're going to have it. This is the appropriate way, if not the right timing, to get the money for the town's projects. They've all been reviewed, I am told by the town administrator, by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and approved. If the time is off, at least the process is right. And that process leads to articles usually being presented at the spring town meeting, now here at the fall town meeting. And it works. But you should know that the DPW Commissioners, having upped the rates for both water and sewer at the suggestion of their consultants, a group called Raftellis Associates, are advised by them, what's called best practices, beware of best practices, to reserve some of the money from the water and sewer fees that we all pay, the rates, perhaps 10%, although 10% is not graven in stone anywhere, it might be a lesser or a greater sum, and use that money for capital projects. And I was told by the town administrator that all of this, you know, was in the works, might or might not happen, wait and see. And I'm sure he's cursing me as I speak, but this is something we do not wish to see. The present system for paying for capital projects, what we're doing right now, works just fine. And that is the review of all of the projects by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, which ranks them on the basis of their necessity, public safety or legal requirements, and the town's ability to pay, and brings them to the spring town meeting. So if something else is being hatched, you wish to guard against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Any further discussion before we go back to Mr. Reed, so he can hit all balls at the same time? Mr. Reed?
I don't think we're trying to hatch anything. The process is going to be the same. The difference is going to be, we're going to have some money to do some things with along the way. Just an interesting note here, in 2007, you paid $6.70 for 10,000 gallons of water. In 2024, you paid $16.32 for that same 10,000 gallons of water. The DPW Commissioners know this is on, we just can't live like that. We need to work on ways to make water less expensive for all of us. And we hired this consulting firm because they're the number one in the country at doing this type of work. So we've adopted a system that's very similar to many towns across the United States. And the goal is two things, really. One is, we need to conserve water because we're using more water yearly, and our population isn't going up. So we're hoping that, you know, some of the rate structure that we put in place will help us with conservation. And secondly, we feel that the people that use the largest amounts of water should be paying more than those that do not pay or use large amounts of water. We also created a piece so that we would be putting money into a fund so that we have money for some of these infrastructure projects as we go forward. You know, this is no different than our own way we plan our own houses. We're trying to get ahead of some of these issues. We won't be ahead of all of them, but we sure can get it in front of a lot of them. And that's what we're trying to do. We also had a study last year where we looked at, why are we losing water? And you know what? That, we didn't get an answer on that because they couldn't find the water that we're losing. So we're dealing with an old structure with small leaks in it and trying to figure out where are these leaks. And we'll probably be back looking for better equipment for looking for some of this water. So, you know, we're certainly undertaking the work to try and make this a better system. And lastly, through the years, the town of Rockport has chosen to put Band-Aids on big problems. And it's catching up to us. You know, we can't do it anymore. And there's a lot that goes on. You know, we're, we know what we need, and we go to the selectmen, we go to the Finance Committee, they know what the town needs. So they're trying to make judgment calls as to where the money needs to go. So we're all in this together, and we're just working through these problems and trying to make it better.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any, any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. We're going to use the clickers to vote electronically. The question is on whether to appropriate $100,000 to pay Sewer Enterprise capital outlay items and to authorize the treasurer to borrow that sum as set forth on page 23 of the voter's booklet. You'll have 12 seconds. From when I say the words "vote now," you will press 1 or A for aye if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for no if you oppose the motion. This requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any confusion on what you're voting on? All right. All those in favor, press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed, press 2 or B for no. Ready? And that carries 97% to 3%, and the numerical is 163 to 5, I believe. And I understand that during the course of the meeting, we've had 210 check-ins. We'd love to see more, but I'm glad to see that we have that many, and I appreciate everybody attending tonight. We're now going to draw the rest of this evening's articles. So A, therefore, will next take up Article A and B in that order. Followed by G, which leaves, I can't remember which one. H. No, there's no motion under H. Right? No motion. All right. So A, Alpha, Bravo, and then Golf.
Mr. Moderator, Article A. Select Board Chair Ross Brackett moves that the town appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the September 9, 2024 Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet for Article A on page 19, all for the purpose of paying unpaid bills and adjustments from the prior fiscal year. The Select Board and the Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer the sums as set forth on page 19 of the voter's booklet to pay unpaid bills and adjustments from prior fiscal years. This requires a nine-tenths vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. Mr. Vera?
Mr. Moderator, Article B. Finance Committee Chair Dwight Valentine moves that the town amend the votes taken under Articles 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, and/or 6B of the April 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting by transferring the sum set forth in the September 9, 2024 Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet for Article B motion on page 20, and in the amounts and for the purposes specified therein. The Select Board and the Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I sense you're ready to vote. The question on the floor is whether to amend the votes taken at the April 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting under the cited articles by transferring the specified sums as set forth on page 20 of the voter's booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. On to Golf. Article G. Not really, but...
Mr. Moderator, Select Board Member Don Southard moves that the town authorize municipal charges lien on real property located within the town for certain town charges, namely any charge or fee payable to the town pursuant to a land lease agreement of town-owned real property. The Select Board and the Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. The question is whether to authorize municipal charges, charges lien on real property for certain town charges, namely any charge for fee, a fee payable to the town pursuant to a land lease agreement of town-owned property. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. I'd like to thank everybody for a nice, boring meeting this evening. The chair will entertain a motion to dissolve. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Meeting's dissolved.